Welcome to the July 23, 28 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shuldorff.
Here.
Hanky.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Parson.
Right now.
Syam.
Here.
Jones. Oops, sorry. Harris. I moved it around and left you off, sorry.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any correction additions to the meeting minutes of July 9, 2018? Hearing none, Councilman Hinky moves to approve the minutes, second by Mr. Shuldorff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Eyes have it. Meeting minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is Eddie's Hero Award for Caitlin Johnson presented by Chief Lowry and Mayor Schneider.
So, real quick, I just want to talk about the award and then Councilman Egan nominated Caitlin for this award. But what the award is, is that I think everybody around town knows about Eddie. Eddie's our public service dog. He's different than any other canine that we have. Eddie's a friendly dog. He goes to schools, retirement communities, block parties, generally the hit of Eddie where he goes. And just been an outstanding program we have. Officer Lori Mann is Eddie's handler, and Lori does just an outstanding job. She's always making herself available to go to different events. So, the Eddie's Hero Award, what we've done is about a year ago, right Lori? We decided that he's such a hit, let's do something for the youth of our community by presenting Eddie's Hero Award. And what we're looking for is the youth in our community that go out and just do the extra, the volunteering, more than what a normal person would be expecting. Somebody that really goes out, does an outstanding job volunteering in the community, and just doing outstanding things. And that's why Caitlin was nominated by Councilman Egan. Before we get to Councilman Egan, I want to turn it over to the mayor to see what he's got to say.
Yeah, we are outclassed by Eddie every day except something that we just have to, you know, it kind of hurts our morale a little bit, but you know, it's for the good of the city. Eddie is such a great ambassador, but it's kind of high maintenance like some other leaders are, you know. So, anyway, it's a great award to allow us to recognize citizens that go above and beyond with citizenship, helping others, giving back to the community, or setting a good example. And we're just very, very proud to be able to present this award.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Before Ms. Johnson or Ms. Goodman reads the award, I just want to say a few things about Caitlin. I've had the honor and pleasure of knowing Caitlin for, I don't know, eight or nine years now, and we've seen her kind of grow up in front of our very eyes, and she's just a very, very special young lady. She is going to be receiving the Evans Scholarship and getting a full ride to Mizzou for golfing. It's a scholarship that she earned through grades and through volunteering, and it is for tatties. And besides all the volunteer work, she comes from a great family living over in Ward Number Two, Cory and Mike Johnson. They, again, they're very active in our community. We're very, very proud of Caitlin, and we know that she is going to be successful at Mizzou and come back home and be a great lifelong residence. And before we give her award, we'll ask Ms. Goodman to read the award.
Caitlin Johnson is an amazing young lady that has given so much to our community. Caitlin has volunteered for the City of Florissant BBQ, the St. Ferdinand Charity Basketball Tournament, Race to the Shrine, Christian Family Learning Center, and served at Thanksgiving Dinner at St. Ferdinand Church. She has also volunteered for the Kindred Hospice, World Food Bank, St. Jokum and St. Anne Toy Drive, Autism Walk of IWA, Booster Golf Club Tournament, CYC Golf Championships, CYC Soccer Games, CYC Basketball Games. Caitlin has helped rehab houses and winterized homes for those in need. Caitlin is definitely a hero and an asset to our community.
And for those of you who don't believe it, he is the most popular cop we have. When you go into the gym and there's a thousand kids screaming Eddie, Eddie, and the mayor
Next item on the agenda is a joint proclamation for Rosemary Davison Day to commemorate what would have been her 100th birthday. Mayor?
Whereas Rosemary Davison was a legend and an extraordinary woman whose efforts and accomplishments made her a source of inspiration to all those around her. Whereas Rosemary Davison was a member of the Missouri Bar Association, served as Deputy U.S. Marshal for the Eastern District of Missouri, and worked for the City of Florissant as a city clerk. Whereas Rosemary Davison dedicated her entire life to serving the community and the preservation of historically significant homes that helped shape Florissant, including the Archibald House, Tidonoya, the railroad station, Peters House, and the Gettumire House. Whereas Rosemary Davison implemented the walk through history honoring those individuals making significant contributions to the community. Ms. Davison was inducted herself with a plaque on November 18, 2014. And whereas Rosemary Davison was the founder of Historic Florissant Inc., Incorporated, which maintains a resource center to house research documents for the area and has worked with the State Preservation Office in relation to preservation and restoration of buildings. Whereas Rosemary Davison was a founding member and past president of Florissant Valley Historical Society, Friends of Old St. Ferdinand, Florissant Old Town Partners, and Sunrise Rotary Club. Whereas Rosemary Davison served on the Board of Freeholders, which created the Florissant City Charter, served as Democratic Committee Woman of Florissant, and was a former director of the Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Rosemary Davison was the first woman to serve as the Chair of the St. Louis Archdiocent Commission on Human Rights and donated her services to the Heritage Foundation, East West Gateway Task Force, St. Louis County Historic Buildings Commission, North County Churches United, Oasis Intergenerational Program, and longtime member of Sacred Heart Church, Catholic Church. And whereas Rosemary Davison has been acclaimed for her columns in the Florissant Valley Reporter and has published two books on the area's history. Whereas Rosemary Davison has received a President's Award, National Trust for Historic Preservation, Distinguished Service Award from Landmarks of St. Louis, and What's Right with the Region Award from Focus St. Louis, the Gold Medal from the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Florissant Business and Professional Women's Women of Achievement Award, the Commerce Bank and Kemper Foundation Community Service Award, two Missouri Governors' Leadership Awards, the Rosier Award from Missouri Alliance for Historic Preservation, North County Inc. Committed to Community Development Award, and the Elmer Belcher Leadership Award for a longtime positive commitment to the North County region. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Snyder, Mayor of the City of Florissant, Missouri, and the Florissant City Council, do hereby proclaim August 7 as Rosemary Davison Day in the City of Florissant honoring the anniversary of what would have been Ms. Davison's 100th birthday.
Well, the plaque pretty much says it all, so there's not much more to say except that all of us probably knew Rosemary. She was the city clerk when I picked up my petition to run for council in 1979. I think she was still the city clerk at that time. She was the city clerk from the time the city was rechartered in 1963. She pretty much set the standard for historic preservation and was a great example for many others. Very grateful for all the structures that have been preserved, and not only that, but just a lot of the artifacts and things that remind us of where we came from. In addition to the plaque, I also retrieved a mock-up of the sidewalk plaque, you know, walk through history, and I was going to present that to you guys, and you think you'll find the best place for it to reside. And just, I don't know, who wants to say something today? August 7 is the date we're going to have a ceremony. Does somebody want to tell us what we're doing?
On August 7, we'll be celebrating Rosemary Davison's 100th birthday. I'm sorry, it's August 12 at the historic, I mean, I wasn't prepared for this, sorry. We're going to have a 100th birthday for Rosemary Davison, August the 12, which is a Sunday, at the Gettumire House, which is the home of Historic Florissant. And everyone is invited to come, and we'll be doing it at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is the time to speak to the council on any issues not necessarily on the agenda for three minutes. This is not a question and answer period. If you would like to speak to the council member or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting is over. If you are here to speak on any public hearings, which we don't have any, please wait and speak when a public hearing is announced. First person to come up is Mary Sullivan. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Mary Sullivan, 8 Manor Drive in Florissant. I recently retired after 43 years of registered nursing service. I also served two terms in a school board, and it was an elementary school board. I inherited my childhood home on Manor Drive and would like to place a little free library on my property. I was told by Tim that I needed to come and ask permission. So, basically, the books would be an emphasis on elementary school children because McCurdy is right behind my house. My brother, who's going to make the library, went to McCurdy School. And so, I kind of looked up some information about Florissant as far as the people who fall at or below the poverty level, and it looks like there'd be about 4,400 people in Florissant that could potentially enjoy this library as well as everyone else. So, if anyone wants to see pictures of the library, I have it here, or if you have any questions for me. Nothing?
Are you emphasizing just on children, preschool, just elementary school level, and that's basically, would you take adult books also?
Yes, yes. I already have donors of money to buy new books, and I have donors of used books. It would be elementary, middle school, and adult.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I take my office?
I'm sorry?
Can I take my office?
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Adams.
My name is Don Adams, and all my information's on the card, so that you have that on file there. With the way things are today, I don't like to give that information out. Two things. First thing is, I guess, our illustrious lake at St. Ferdinand Park. I understand money's been appropriated to clean that lake up two years ago, and it looks like a pigsty. I was up there the other day. It's disgusting, and it's still, after two years, it's disgusting. I guarantee you, if the golf course looked like this, we'd have every greenskeeper in the United States at the golf course taking care of the golf course. Money's been appropriated. I'm curious as to why, as a Florissant citizen, my tax dollars have not been used to clean up that lake yet. That's the first thing. The second thing is, under Article 2, weeds, Chapter 13 is nuisance, and Chapter 213.07 weeds over eight inches tall. It describes that issue. And then Article 213.070, owner notified, and 213.090, it talks about public notification of how it's done, and the weeds are to be cut, and if they're not cut, then Florissant's to cut them. And it says that they'll come out one time and look and notify. And after that, if they're called out again, they automatically just cut it, and they charge the owner. And I want to know again, 42 years I've lived here, and I'm on my way out the door, if things don't change real quick, there is no reason for this stuff to happen. Our previous administrations constantly took care of things when there was an issue. You went to them, and they were taken care of. The chief of police, God rest his soul, you go to him, I went to him not too long ago with the issue. That issue, to my knowledge, and I know I'm not the only one that went to him with it, taken care of like that. I don't see that issue in Florissant no more. So, if he can do it, why can't it be done up here? I understand there's some conflict here, okay? And it's not amongst the council members is where the conflict's at. It's the conflict between the council members and the upper echelon. And you need to put Florissant first. People come to these meetings, take their time, voice their opinion, and they never hear nothing back. Nothing's ever heard back. Thank God I have a councilman who does stay in touch with me on a regular basis, but still, there's reasons why we come to these meetings to voice our opinions, because we're concerned about the way Florissant looks and the way Florissant's maintained. And right now, Florissant's on the downward side. It's so far down, I don't even know if it'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you. Mr. Jones.
I think that was just before.
Jones, you're good? Next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. Next item's public hearing, which there are none. Next item is old business. First item under old business is bills for a second reading. Bill for a second reading, first one is bill number 9401. Orders to authorize amendment to special use permit... Oh, that's... I'm sorry. Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize amendment to special use permit number 4879 as amended for Bentwood Nursing Home, Nursing and Rehab to allow for an expansion of a nursing home located at 1501 Charbonneir Road.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to authorize amendment to special use permit number 4879 as amended for Bentwood Nursing Home and Rehab to allow for an expansion of a nursing home located at 1501 Charbonneir Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Bill number 9401 becomes ordinance 8429. Bill number 9401 should be 02, 9402. Councilman Jones also moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 8016 to allow for the expansion of the vacuum area for the car wash, bright works, for the property located at 475 North Highway 67.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, second by Councilman Hinky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Orders to issue an amendment to B5 ordinance number 8016 to allow for the expansion of the vacuum area for the car wash, bright works, for the property located at 475 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Bill number 9402 becomes ordinance 8430. Next item on the agenda is new business. Mr. Hinky.
Yes, for the Mayor's Traffic Advisory Commission, I'd like to present the name of Pete Fisher, 905 North Lafayette Street.
All right, okay. Okay, we'll get one of the mayors.
Need a second.
Mr. Egan, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Harris?
Pete wasn't cleared from the seat before.
Okay. All right, next item on, requests. Councilman Shuldorff moves to accept the application to transfer special use permit number 1910 as amended from Manor Care Health Service Incorporated to MC Florissant Realty LLC for the operation of an extended care facility. Second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Next item under new business is resolution number 1004.
Resolution of the City of Florissant supporting a grant application for the installation of a splash pad in Coke Park.
Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Resolution of the City of Florissant supporting a grant application for the installation of a splash pad at Coke Park.
Councilman Harris moves for a third reading, second by Councilman Hinky. Roll call, vote, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this resolution? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Jones.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shuldorff.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Parson.
Yes.
Syam.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Resolution number 1004 passes. Next item is bills for a first reading. Bill number 9404.
Orders authorizing appropriation of $21,122 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 61440, capital outlay for the purpose of funding additional sign for the JFK Community
Councilman Shuldorff moves for a second reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
President Caputa. I'm sorry. Is this a place where a discussion would take place?
Yes.
My light up here.
You're on.
Okay.
You're on.
You know, I do have some concern about this one, and I've heard from residents about this, so I'm not sure if... May we have some discussion over this? Over this bill?
We are in discussion.
Okay. You want to just... So, I just had some questions, because this was something that... About the sign. Now, I know, do we have any other signs in the city that are like this sign? So, it's a new sign, right? A new type of sign?
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm asking this to staff, or... Okay.
Yes, there is another sign that's proposed like this. The Fire Department of Firehouse One has one.
Okay.
I mean, they utilize it for information, a lot of information they put on there, considering when, you know, change your smoke detectors, you know, smoke detectors save lives, and other public service announcements that they utilize for that sign.
And I think I'm a big fan of technology, and I would like to have all the communication that we can have, but the concern was that just the expense of the sign at this time from the Parks Fund, my... A lot of people listed other things that maybe it could be used for. So, that was my concern. And questions related to that?
Mr. Shuldorff.
No, I... That was from a previous...
Okay. Mr. Egan.
Thank you. I guess I did not see the E in front of this and wasn't aware we're going to do three readings on this tonight. That's my error. I'll be very candid with you, we've talked about these signs for some time, probably three or four years, we've talked about the benefits of these signs, and I know we're getting ready to open up the Justice Center here very soon. I'm a big believer in the way we communicate, and I think it would be a tremendous way to communicate. We have, like I said, discussed these for several years, and I'm supportive of taking other funds that they're designated from. Thank you.
Ms. Pagano?
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Egan, and we have been talking about these as long as I can remember also. And I think why it's coming up now is because we do need the one at the new municipal center, and the police department has asked for one too. So, in order to get a bundle package together, this is sort of how it came about. This is not like something that we quickly decided on, but information on, you know, the east side of the city, the west side of the city, and to have this information for all the people of the things that are happening, I'm in full support of it.
Mr. Parson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question about this, I'm fully in support of the sign, so I understand how this came about. However, I have heard some concern in terms of it going up for three readings today, and I guess my issue is, I know that the Justice Center pretty much needs its sign right away, That's, that's really my concern. If anybody can answer that.
Mayor?
It's the, we'll get three of them less expensively than if we buy three of them separately.
I understand that, but is it a requirement to have three readings on the JFK sign today? Or do we need three readings on all three together?
We won't be able to pull the trigger on any of the signs unless we buy them separately, then they'll cost more.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, we've discussed these signs at length, alone and together, the package deal, that's how we came up with this. I will say just, in, in just a little bit of a response, just about every dollar that we spend in this city, whether it be for this or anything else, someone could say, well, I'd rather have this for the money than this for the money. We've discussed this at length and I fully support these signs as they are. Not that other, not that other suggestions for the money doesn't invalidate them. Of course, there's other valid uses for the money, but we've done this at length and I fully support these signs.
Mr. Harris?
Well, I sent a question after I became aware of this on Friday about the possible savings of the bundle, because I know that was, I went back to the, the meeting notes in April when this was sort of suggested that we might save by bundling. I didn't see that in, in the information that I received that there was any discount. It actually said 0% discount on their, on one of the documents. And I was wanting to see that, that there actually was savings. I don't know how that we saved. Or if that was just sort of a verbal thing, that yes, you did save because you did three signs at the same time.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, like most of you guys have said, we've been working on this for some time. We just didn't all of a sudden decide to do this. I am very big on communication. I was on, I care about Floriscent earlier today discussing this. We do have our ears open to the residents, don't think we ignore you guys because we do work for you. And I think we all up here are in agreement that we work for you guys and we don't cut you guys out of the picture. But we have been talking about the lack of communication that our city has and how behind in times we are as far as communication. We have one old sign up at the Egan Center that tells us about our plays, very distorted old sign that should have been replaced a long time ago. I am for pushing this city forward, especially with our Police Department, our new courthouse with the Police Department in there, and the JFK. We have talked about buying just maybe one sign or just second sign, but then we think that it's equally responsible to do it in all the spots, so we're covering all the city for communication. I could go on and on about this, I don't mean to drag this out, but this is not something that we just threw together, you guys. We have did a lot of homework and looked at other city stuff. I sat with the Fire Department when they first proposed their sign, with some of their committee members, asked them a lot of questions why they were even proposing a sign. So, I, please, think we're in good intentions with these signs because we are. And the more people we get to communicate with the city, the more you guys will be involved and up to date with what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. My, my question is, I know we have two signs, the same thing, one for the Police and one for JFK. Same sign, identical. One is a couple thousand dollars more than the other one, and that would be my question. One's 53, 920, one's 51, 122. And they're both the same size, same identical sign. So, that's what, that's my question of, I mean, do we have to move to make more, you know, for electric to get to the sign? And that, that's my, my only question of it.
I drove, I drive by there a lot because I live over by there. And today I drove by and just to kind of try to get a sight line for the sign, and I noticed that there's, you know, some traffic light pole and then the, there's power line poles there and there's also trees coming from the other way. And I'm wondering if we've considered the line of sight there, that if there is this, this particular location of the sign, is it going to be fully viewable to get the, the most, most views? And then my other question would be because that this is on a county maintained road in Howderschell, that have we explored any co-funding options based on the traffic that goes there, that if, if traffic alerts or warnings could be issued, if St. Louis County would have any funding sources to kick in on this? There is, I know there's a, there's one out the recplex, there's a big LED sign out there in front of the recplex, and I kind of looked into how, how that came about. And I know that when they talked about their signs, that they, they had some co-funding with St. Charles County, they explored. So, just an idea.
Which recplex, Mr. Harris?
The reclex in St. Peters.
Oh, in St. Peters?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's St. Charles County.
Right, that's who they, who they did. So, I wondered, I didn't have time to research that fully, but wondering if there was any options for that to save us some money and have some cooperation there.
That it? Thank you. All in favor of second reading? All against?
Ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $21,122 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 61440, capital, capital outlay for the purpose of funding a digital sign for the JFK Community Center.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third, second by Councilman Hanky. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Before the final vote is taken? Nope, that's it. Okay, that's right. Yep, goes to the next one. Bill number 9405.
Ordinance, sorry, ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the, for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the, for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none of the, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Before the final vote is taken? Nope, that's it. Okay, that's right. Yep, goes to the next one. Bill number 9405.
Orderance, sorry, ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a second reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none of the, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Orderance amending general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Orderance amending the general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Councilman Pagano moves for a third reading, second by Mr. Shuldrough. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Orderance amending general fund budget to reflect $54,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of a digital sign for the Police Department.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Bill number 9407 becomes ordinance 8432.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is council announcements.
Excuse me. What happened to 9406?
It got a first reading. It got a first reading.
It was painted?
It got a first reading.
Yeah. That was, ma'am, that was the bill on the first reading and it went for a first reading. We didn't do a three reading on that bill.
Okay, so was it approved?
No.
No, ma'am, not yet.
Next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Could you, um, yes, Councilman Egan would like to speak with you after the meetings are fine and he'll explain it, explain it in more depth for you. Okay, thank you. Next item is the council announcements. Mr. Sayam?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, I actually have two things, both of them having to do with the Neighborhood Watch Program in my ward. The first is that we've organized a street cleanup, kind of like what they do in Ward Four, and that's going to take place on Saturday, August 4th at 9:30. We're all going to meet at
Ordinance authorizing, authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 1910 as amended and subsequently transferred from Manor Care Health Services Incorporated to MC Florissant Realty LLC and Florissant Healthcare LLC for the operation of extended care facility.
For the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parson?
Yes.
Sayam?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Bill number 9407 becomes ordinance 8432. Next on the agenda is council announcements.
Excuse me, what happened to 9406?
Could you, um, yes, councilman Egan would like to speak with you after the meetings, if fine, and he'll explain it, explain it in more depth for you. Okay, thank you. Next items of council announcements, Mr. Sayam.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have, I actually have two things, both of them having to do with the neighborhood watch program in my ward, the first is that we've organized a street cleanup, kind of like what they do in Ward Four, and that's going to take place on Saturday, August 4th at 9:30, we're all going to meet at the Paddock Hills Shopping Center behind Salvation Army, and we're going to clean up a portion of North Waterford between Paddock and Waterford, and we're hoping to have a lot more of these in the future. I also wanted to thank Beth Spafford, who is in, over there in the audience tonight for organizing this, your efforts and care for your community certainly don't go unnoticed or unappreciated. The second thing I have for, is the neighborhood watch meeting for Ward Nine, and that is going to be on Tuesday, August 14th at 7 o'clock PM in the Egan Center Arts and Crafts Room in the basement, and I hope everybody can make it to that and join your neighborhood watch program, become a block captain, and just participate and help keep your neighborhood safer, thanks a lot.
Thanks for getting that going there, Councilman Sayam. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. President. On August the 11th, they will have the Marianne Tournament, the Marianne Tournament was a golf tournament that was started by Jackie Bond's family in response to a, a cancer death in the family. This year's recipient is the Cooper Tracy family, Cooper's a Florissant boy, a little three-year-old that has neuroblastoma and is currently going through some bone marrow treatment, so if you want to get a foursome in, I think there's still a couple foursomes left, there's still whole sponsors, and if you have some swag you want to give away or gifts, certificates or prizes, get ahold of me, jeegan70@al.com, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Egan, Mr. Jones?
Shout out the team, there's always somebody hungry morning, noon or night, they're always looking for volunteers, extra canned goods or anything like that, I think that's all.
Mr. Shuldorff?
Thank you, Mr. President, the 10th Annual St. Louis Craft Beer Week is July 27th through August 4th, and Florissant is a active participant, Hendles is hosting Ferguson Brewing Company the entire week, and Narrow Gauge Brewing Company slash Cuginos will have an event on July 29th with the brunch buffet and with hand, handcrafted beer, so please remember those dates and take part in that. Graham Road is a very busy place these days, Starbucks is in the midst of a renovation on the exterior of the property, and the inside renovation will follow. Sightman Cancer Center is a multimillion dollar project, and as you may have seen, is underway, and the official groundbreaking is next week, and the entire city and everybody is looking forward to that facility on Graham Road, it's, yeah, Tuesday morning, and it's going to be a great event. Washington University pediatricians at the St. Louis Children's Hospital are providing coverage for pediatric patients at Northwest Healthcare on Graham Road, it's a very good service, it started July 1st, and it's just another addition to our city at Northwest Healthcare that people can take advantage of, but please think about taking your children there if you have an emergency, thank you.
Take Ms. Shuldorff. Mr. Hinke?
Yeah, thank you, some of you may or may not know, remember how kept my, Barb and I's youngest grandson, our newest grandson, I should say, in your thoughts and prayers, Lucas Hasselbach, I found out right before the meeting tonight, he's been in intensive care down at Cardinal Glennon, I found out just before the meeting, Barb come in tonight, and Lucas got to go home today, so I want to thank you for your thoughts and prayers, thank you very much.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I, I also am excited about the Neighborhood Watch efforts across the city, and, and Chief Lowery and Officer Michael have been amazing in, in sort of leading the captains as well and, and giving some form to that program, that I'd like to thank the Ward One Neighborhood Watch captains, Jane Buller and Lance Helwig, for their volunteer leadership, and the Ward One total number of members has grown to 202 residential members, including 17 block captains, last year at the same time, there were only 89 members and six block captains, so really proud of that, and also encouraged that some businesses have started to join, I don't know if people know that if you own a business in Florissant, you can also join as a business, which is really cool, and, and then I understand also the surveillance camera program through the police department is, is growing, so anyone can join the Neighborhood Watch, simple and easy way is to Google Florissant Neighborhood Watch and just click on the first link in the search, and that's the one, you can fill out the form online. Ward One is also holding our first neighborhood cleanup on August 11th, starting at 9:00 AM at Walker Elementary, we're going to meet, for more details you can contact one of the ward captains or myself, wardone@florissantmo.com, and it's also on my Facebook page as an event, thank you.
Ms. Pagano?
Yes, I, I'm just wondering if we could take a moment of silence for all those people in Branson who lost family members and that horrific accident down there, and even far the city of Branson, because this is a hard thing to come back from.
Have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Egan?
Yeah, I apologize if I forgot to mention that Sunday, August 19th is the Valley of Flowers Day at the Cardinal game, and tickets being sold through the Valley of Flowers Committee will benefit the Valley of Flowers event, it's going to be Sunday, August 19th, it'll be 72 degrees and it'll be shady everywhere in the ballpark, thank you.
Yes, like I always say every council announcement, firearms, if you own a firearm, be a responsible firearm owner, do not leave it in your car, make sure your firearm's secured so nobody can steal it, make sure that if you see any suspicious people in your neighborhoods, everybody knows what everybody is supposed to be in their neighborhoods, if you see any suspicious people trying to go around knocking on doors, selling, trying to sell items, make sure you call the Florissant Police Department, they should have a badge on it if they're trying to solicit any kind of product. Congratulations to, I guess, Mr. Sayam, Mr. Harris for stepping up and trying to, to get their, the streets cleaned up to adopt a street, we're also, Ward Four is also having one sharing at the same date, August 11th with Ward One, we're also, we're doing it up at Walker School at 9:00 AM. That's all I have, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, well, Mr. Egan took care of this announcement, you can get information on that fun baseball game at the office at florissantvalleyofflowers.com or 837-0033, and Mr. Shuldorff mentioned the exciting opening of the Sightman Cancer Center, we're very grateful for the investment that the Christian hospital people are making in the city of Florissant, and I think we're seeing that the coffee shop is going to take advantage of that new activity, and we're already getting ahead of the curve and doing a renovation, I think we're going to see a lot of other investment in that vicinity. Safermo.com is going to start, we're going to talk more about it after the August primary, this is the campaign to pass Proposition D for much-needed highway infrastructure investment, it's something I've been very involved in, I was on the task force, I'm also on the steering committee, I'd like to thank Bridgeston Mayor Terry Briggs, who is the treasurer and very active in the campaign, and the many, many, many stakeholders are helping out, we also are getting positions from people like North County Incorporated, Greater North County Chamber, Engineers Club, the American Society of Civil Engineers, and many, many others, and if those in the audience listening, if you have an organization that is interested in helping out, please call my office and we'd like to get your endorsement also. We had, we're very pleased, I'll go into the sports page here, very pleased to have hosted the United States Kids Golf Foundation with a golf tournament at the golf, at Florissant Golf Club, we had kids from all over the state and some other states as well competing, and it was organized by St. Albans Golf Professional, Rob Sadoric, and he said that the course was terrific and the kids really enjoyed it. I'd also like to congratulate the Florissant Swim Team, they're the 2018 conference champions, they have their dinner tomorrow evening, they have been undefeated in the conference championship in my tenure, I'm proud of them, so this is their seventh, seventh year in a row that they've won the conference, and they've only lost one meet in all that period of time, they lost one meet very narrowly last year, but they undefeated this year. The Best Donuts in St. Louis, a guide to the region's hot and fresh tasty treats was just announced, so congratulations to Keith Took and Old Town Donuts for being awarded the Best Donuts in St. Louis, we already knew that, we don't need any more excuse to go there, do we? We also, last week we had the ribbon cutting for Mer's Goodwill, this was a renovation of an unused big box at the corner of Charbonneir and Lindbergh, they've put quite a bit of investment into it, it's a state-of-the-art facility for Goodwill, this is where they're, this is going to be the kind of facility that they'll be investing in going forward, where they have the drop-off and the pickup and everything is, is very organized and almost like a, kind of like a mini factory. Today we had the ribbon cutting for the expansion of Amore's Pizza, they've done a wonderful job in going next door, similar to the way that City Diner has done, expanding their seating area, doubling it, and we're very proud of them, it's been, been a very popular venue in Old Town, very much welcome, and very successful, and I'm predicting it'll be even more successful, I think two plus two is going to equal five. On Wednesday, we're going to have another Wednesday night out, and prior to that, we will honor the late Kaye Spring, she was, we, we honored Rosemary Davison tonight, Kaye was one of her sidekicks, kind of picked up where Rosemary left off, she was very, very involved in historic preservation, and we'll recognize her, her family requested that her plaque be close to Rosemary's. And then Wednesday night at the Shrine, the, it'll be movie night, it'll be my granddaughter's favorite movie, Wana, and it's going to, that'll start at dusk, the trouble is, I don't think she can stay up that late. Then on next Monday, the 5th Monday of July, we will dedicate the Florissant Municipal Division Court Building and Police Annex, and everybody is invited at 7:00 PM, the seats have already arrived, the seats were installed today that are in the courtroom, so we have seating, and we're going to have ice cream and cake, and we'll have a ceremony that are presided by, by esteemed Senator Gina Walsh, will be our master of ceremonies. Then the next food truck night will be August 17th down at the Knights Grounds, and then Saturday night at the lake, which is going to get renovated after the concert season is over, we're going to have Smash Band, Super Hits, and Smash will be in town, the following week we'll have Billy Peake, and then August 11th before the next council meeting, Butch Wax and the Hollywoods, so we have some really hot numbers coming up for the next three Saturdays at 7:00 PM at St. Ferdinand Lake. And, let's see, last thing, we got the British soccer camps going on right now, we got the back-to-school party coming in on August 3rd at the swimming pool, that's going to be from 6:30 to 8:30, that's for families and people of all ages, and that's it, till next time, thank you.
Next regular meeting for the city council will be Monday, August 13th, 2018, Councilman Parson moves to adjourn the regular uni, or, regular meeting, second by Mr. Jones, all in favor? All opposed? Ayes have it, meeting adjourned.